Okay, already.
For the only one I've got done.
I almost wonder if we need to reboot our server.
Oh yeah, is that it?
We had a power outage.
Oh.
That could be.
That could be.
Cause I, it's not coming through.
You still don't love it.
I may holler it all up.
So down here to the bottom of our agenda where we've got this about the Fairground Expo Center in the Yellow House.
We don't have any of that, no. And on the app, and I told her, cause she came down this morning and I told her on those, I said, those are, I'd like to get those through before the end of the year.
Yes.
Those are the ones that we had a little, because we've got to get those paid, you know?
Z and Y.
Cause those are the ones that Stephen said he'd do the affidavit on.
Yes, right. Okay, and that was on one of my comments, I couldn't remember what we did on the minutes. I had a question and it's highlighted in yellow because I just had a question. Cause I couldn't remember what we did. Cause I didn't have my, yes, yes, I couldn't remember. So you probably need to put that in the minutes that he said he'd prepare affidavits. Cause I couldn't remember what we did, I didn't have my minutes.
This, this is a done.
She said if I would even help her this morning, she'll tell him those are priority that we need to get those done and, cause I was thinking if we could have a meeting maybe on Thursday.
I thought we were going to.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, no, you, he means this week.
Well now Thursday is.
I won't be, yeah.
I won't be here either.
Yeah, that's the echo six. And I've got grandkids all Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so I'm.
Which I'm planning on taking off on Friday, so.
Okay.
Well, could we, if we could even, if we do it Wednesday.
Morning, early Wednesday morning?
I have to post.
Well, you can't do it before nine o'clock.
Or could we do it Wednesday after lunch or at lunch, or you tell me?
Well, it only takes two of you to be here, I don't know that I could be here for sure.
Okay, so what are we going over for that day?
Payroll and then just whatever.
Oh payroll, oh yeah, payroll Wednesday, okay, okay. Yeah, why don't we post it real quick right?
Cause I did talk to Buddy and I'll talk to y'all about it when we get to that line item about how we need, that we need to definitely get all of it in before the end of the year.
Right, we do, yeah, so maybe we could, maybe when you get somebody in here, we could post it at 10 o'clock.
Do what? Yeah, yeah, we haven't started.
We haven't started yet. Okay, enjoy the start.
Oh, he did one better now?
Yeah.
The high flying flag?
Why is it not switching?
What?
Oh, they get, they get stuck.
Okay, we're, we're on.
We're live, alright. Um, call our meeting to order at 9:03. Let the record show, we were ha, uh, experienced some difficulty with our electronics, that's why we're running a little few minutes late. Um, roll call please.
Bobby.
Here, Ronk.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a quorum, Pat would you lead us in prayer this morning?
Our dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for all the many blessings. We come to you and thanks for the, for the wonderful rain that you've sent us to, to refresh our parched earth. We ask that you keep all of our employees safe as they go through the week. We ask that you keep all the pastors by as they go in, in and out of our county, keep them safe. We ask that you guide us as we go through our agenda to make the, the best decisions for, for everyone that is pleasing to you. We ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pat, would you lead us in the flag salute please?
Yes, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the Open Meeting Act. Okay, thank you. Consider an act on approval of minutes for June 18th regular meeting.
Should we just go through all that then, if, if she didn't get the email?
Well, however you want to do it, or I can just run over and change and bring it back and then just put out.
Do you know what the changes are?
Well, I'll see if I can reboot it and get it to come back up.
As I say, I could resend mine too. Um, trying to see, let me get Mindy to go.
I don't know if I can resend mine or.
I can resend yours. I was gonna say I could.
Hi, can you come over, cause, okay, thank you.
Do you want me to send it like to Mindy maybe?
Well.
Or to? I'll send it both, I'll send it, I'm gonna send it to you again.
And bring Mindy or whoever.
Okay, Cindy Pratt. And I will send it to Alex as well. And how come she doesn't show up?
I know, so, I don't understand how that is sometimes.
She doesn't show up in my mail.
I'm gonna go.
So anyway, I sent you, I sent that to you and I'm going to send Pat's to you again as well.
Okay, alright, I'll go see if I can get her.
Okay.
Hi, Mindy.
Hi.
We are experiencing technological difficulties this morning, so we are, we are a work in progress here. So, um, we will, we wait for her to see if she's got those corrections. Uh, comments from the public on the below agenda items? None.
Public.
Alright, item A, transfer of appropriations, uh, see we have one here.
I make a motion to approve transfer.
I'll second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds, to approve the transfer of appropriations from, one of them is capital outlay of M and O to cover AT&amp;T from OSU Extension Office, $500 from capital outlay to M and O $400. That is to cover her AT&amp;T bill. And then, uh, they are moving from the Pond Creek Ambulance, $3,000 from M and O to full-time salaries to, uh, be able to pay their June payroll, those are the two, all in favor?
Bobby?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
How about I move to review purchase orders and travel claims?
I will second that motion to review.
Ronk moves, Hess seconds, to, uh, review the payment of purchase orders and travel claims, all in favor?
Bobby?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously, we are in review motion.
There's that.
Okay. Thank you. Neither that water bottle.
Brett couldn't do that again.
It's getting out of the lid on that.
Same PO2 invoices on different dates.
PO to who?
It, it's a, it's a PO2 PCM dash G in Los Angeles, Courthouse Security. There's same PO2 invoices, one's dated the 19th, one's dated the 21st.
Unless it was a backorder, then it should say it was backorder, but no, that'd be a blanket, that's, you need to note that that should be a blanket unless it was a backorder.
Yeah, it could have been two shipments where you didn't have.
Okay.
I'm gonna pull that one, I want to pay that. Uh, to Kim Cane on that deal where we've paid him and it, well, it was cashed by somebody else that wasn't the right one and, and I, I want to ask Stephen, they say we gotta pay it, I don't, I mean, we're paying it twice. Someone else has cashed the first check, I don't think we ought to pay it.
Oh, gotcha, 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 gotcha. That's been from a long time ago.
Yes, it is, they've been, and Desi's been working through it and the bank that, you're supposed to be able to track it back on a routing number who cashed it and they can't seem to find out who cashed it, so.
Oh boy.
Well, the problem is it's out of Texas and there's several Kim Canes and they all go by Kim Cane.
So you hadn't even told them deciding which one it is.
But they know they want their money.
So the other Kim Cane, one Kim Cane cashed it, the other Kim Cane says, well, they didn't cash it, someone else cashed it and
Yeah, and the, the deposit thing says pay e all.
This was due 6/15/18, but Alex didn't get it till 6/18 of 18. Didn't get, didn't get the invoice till three days after it was due.
Hard to pay it when you don't receive it.
Yeah, it is.
Mindy, are you a requisitioning officer?
For?
Clark's office.
Yeah. No, I'm receiving, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll just put a sticker up here and have.
Alex is, alright, Alex and Cindy are requisitioning.
Okay. They just got mailed.
Every one of them are like that from that bank.
Really?
Yep. Well, they're charging us late fees on there and they need to understand that we don't, uh...
Yeah, we can't, yeah, we can't pay them, we don't think we get an invoice.
Right.
So we're not paying the late fees, right? You're marking them off.
Well, they, somebody's already made a, a note on it, but they don't pay late charges, yep. I stuck a note on one, but there's no use me putting a note on it if it's already been noted.
Right, exactly.
Pat, you're getting your Tracco payroll.
Yes, sir.
Happy day. Yeah.
I think so, I don't know if I have it turned the right direction. I got it printed, but I don't know if I have it all the right direction.
Brandon said the server is down.
Unlike our leadership.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, they're still reviewing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey Cindy.
Mindy.
Excuse me, I said Cindy, I meant Mindy. Could I embark on you to take my coffee cup back over there? And beg of you to...
Bring it back with more coffee and cream.
I'll grovel today.
That was his first cup.
Yes, it was. I'm a two cup stalker, you know.
Boy, Robin's just getting all kinds of retired county workers to go work for her.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Cecil, Beth Peters, Jerry Donaldson.
Oh! Our election board?
Okay, these glasses that Brandon went to, I don't know if it makes any difference or not. They're put as general government, but they're in the, his emergency management.
Well, it's under the general government, but it's the, that's the...
Department.
Department, yeah.
Look how careful she's being with that.
She must've got it to the brim.
She wanted to make sure you were aware of care for.
Thank you, Mindy. I'm getting you a laugh and that was yours.
Max may, Max may have to go take a drink. She's not a coffee drinker. Me either, I never could acquire the taste.
You know, it took me a while, but I finally did.
And now you're hooked.
Mindy, thank you.
She gets the gold star for today.
Yes, she do. I should've been videotaping that.
That was funny.
Oh, that's good, that's warm and nice.
A fresh pot of coffee.
I just need some, those easy eggs.
Oh, man. Half brown's.
Don't get me started here.
Little Bailey's.
Hope you need coffee for you.
Yeah, I'm worried we need those Bailey's.
Who signs for the clerk?
Uh, Hannah, Cindy, and her.
I guess the clerk.
That's what I was asking, that's what I was asking Mindy about, I saw that. It just looks like one that Alex missed.
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. I look for forever stamps now.
Fifty cents.
Fifty, fifty cents.
The forty nine ones will still work.
Yeah.
Did it right. I get in my drawer and I've got two or three stamps left on this deal and a stamp over here and stuff. And I forgot which ones are...
Are worth, or what they're worth, or what they are?
They have, yeah, they're, they use them forever, doesn't matter. The only ones that you can't, the ones that actually have a price printed on them.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you can, then you have to...
I'm still using that forever stamps from when Ronnie died. But what's good, gift to give. I had people give me rolls of stamps and that was wonderful, yeah.
See, you're looking for some more to do.
I'm not really.
Only gonna have to drink water, put your back.
It's hard to work.
Yeah.
I bet you.
Yeah. I see Max is still using that pen I gave him.
I am.
It's nice, isn't it?
It's a nice pen.
Yeah, and don't forget, we can get refills for them, so, yeah.
Okay, I will not throw this away.
Don't throw the case, yeah. What I like is they don't smudge, I mean, they can, but...
Yeah. You know that waxy paper that you get sometimes?
Yeah.
Well, you don't ever want to use one of these on them because they'll wipe off every time.
Uh huh.
Like, Pat, thank you for signing that for me.
What's that?
My travel.
Oh. I just started signing.
He knows it's a generous move. He's a quick signer, he doesn't even sign everything, he can do it half the time.
I noticed you do that.
You are a fast signer.
You are. But have you ever looked at his signature?
Yeah.
He, he aspired to be a doctor.
Yeah, it's like, it's, cause it's like, shh, 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 it's like, it's like, rrrr.
I know.
Like a, like a spray of bullets or something.
Well, I mean, look at autographs on, you know, from...
Very true. They're deemed to be famous, yeah.
Famous people.
Well, it's just like if you go to a, a track and you, you got ten thousand or five thousand signatures that you do. If you're signing that much, you gotta be...
Do it, yeah. I never could do shorthand, but I can write that. Now, maybe only I can read it.
I can't even, half the time, I can't write my own writing.
I know, I was gonna say, yeah, yeah, there are times when I can't read my own writing. The older I get, I find that.
Let's see now.
Cindy, did you see that about the assessor signing that, my note on there, where, no?
Part two.
Yeah.
Yeah, part, saw that.
Okay.
Those are right.
Okay.
Someone's gonna get in the chicken business, huh?
Yeah, I saw that. That just goes to show you, you can buy anything you need off Amazon.
Yeah. Well, let's see, did I hear on the news here a few weeks back or so that they're gonna be doing, building a facility in Tulsa?
Yes, that's correct.
Pryor somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, and that'll be good.
Yeah. Well, that means we can, we can get the use tax out of the...
The what?
When you order something online.
Oh, yeah.
We'll get the use tax.
Well, a big win, the court ruled Friday that, that everybody has to collect all the sales tax now, no matter what, because of, just because you're not mortaring bricks.
Really?
Yep, so now...
Well, that's great.
We'll get to...
That's even good.
Yeah, anything or...
But you should, really.
Right, exactly, that's what we're saying. Just because they're, says, well, if they don't have a presence here, well, they evidently do if you're ordering them.
They're making money off of the citizens of this state.
Right. So...
Good.
Yeah, that's it, NACO was really, really lobbying for that.
And that's just a fair deal.
Yeah.
Is that across the United States?
Yes, uh huh.
Good.
Big win.
Two more for...
Your pants, Max, your, Max, match your pants, pen and pants.
Robin, it looks like you're hiring up all the Grant County retirees.
Trying to keep them busy. Actually, looking on some younger people, so...
Oh, really?
Trying to find some younger ones, most everybody that's younger's working, so...
Well, I appreciate your thinking. You know, if, if Cecil's younger and... I like that, that's good.
Cecil knows how to do the things that we're doing. Some of them are so afraid of the computer and stuff.
Yeah. I think the election board has really come a long ways, even since I've been here, from the machines that, like, they used to do it, how they used to do it. A lot simpler, better. Yeah.
What is a water bottle caddy rack for seventy dollars? A three-tier water bottle caddy rack?
To me, that'd be like a metal rack that you stick the bottles in, I would guess.
With casters on it, too.
Ruining plant stands.
That's, uh, that's not something you put in a wine cellar, is it?
Well, just depends on the application.
We can see the timing of the month.
Urban, urban style leather dining chairs.
Kinda like I heard a commissioner say one time, he said, "I don't drink normally."
You don't?
Yeah.
That can be construed several different ways.
That's what I thought, too, but we were talking about the timing of, of, well, budget time and different things, you know?
Stressful times, yeah. Oh, I saw one of the commissioners in my class last week and he told me to tell Max hello.
Uh-oh, who was that?
From Woodward County, this guy.
Oh, yeah, Bernie Matt?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Probably in like, late sixties, seventies.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be Bernie. Bernie's been real good, you know, going out, fires Cody Hickman and them guys about bringing stuff out for the guys and helping.
And he commented about you, that he appreciated all your hard work.
Oh, well, is Cody Woodward too?
I was thinking he was out in the Panhandle somewhere.
Yeah.
Or Harper County, something.
Harper County, that's where I think.
I guess Harper County is somewhat Panhandle anyway.
Always good to see a, a face you know when you get out there, you know?
Well, that's like the county clerk at Woodward right now. Her grandson's best friend was my husband's nephew, and I've worked with her daughter for years at the bank. So, I've known this woman for a long time, we go to birthday parties together and all that, you know? Like, she comes to the birthday parties for my little great niece and stuff. Oh, hi Wendy. Small world.
Cindy, do you have interlocal agreements to send out to the counties?
I have, I don't have them today, but I have them on my list.
Okay.
Of stu-, of things, so yes, I have them.
Okay, so is that item J, we're just not gonna act on that? Or is that something different?
Yeah, we're not gonna act on that, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, that's fine, really.
It's like, I thought I had sent those up there, too, but apparently not. But I have the next one, so...
Well, I don't know about this one, Robin. About your hiree here.
What's your what?
About your new hiree. Your new hiree.
Cecil?
Ann Burgess. I hadn't seen her for a while, she was up to the co-op here the other day, yeah. She's a pretty nice lady.
I'm related to her.
You're related to her?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know that.
My, Ronnie's grandpa was a Burgess. And so, um, is it Kent that's married to Ann? What's her husband?
Kirk.
Kirk, okay, there's a Kent. Kirk is, would have been Ronnie's grandpa's nephew.
I see.
So, been to family reunions with Ann before, too?
Is Kirk retired?
No, no, not yet.
Thing about Ann is when they get, when they're both retired, I think they're moving, so it's nice, nice.
Are they?
They're building a house. Now.
In Missouri or...
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure which it is, but they're, I know that they're building a house over there.
Well, it couldn't be any nicer close than where Kitty remarried.
Well, thank you.
When I retire, I'm thinking I'm moving over there.
Oh, man.
We gotta get started on our new hiree homes, though, with the new diary.
Bridget moved to Drummond, he moved to Stillwater.
Didn't want to be that nursing home.
He made a...
Well, you know, I told my sister, and I said that probably her and I'll end up being the little maids that live together. I told her, I said, "We're moving the byhouse, not yours."
I didn't know that. I think, I'm hearing that he may retire next spring.
Yeah, he lives over there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, he already lives over there.
I was kinda surprised at the border, like, dude.
I am surprised, too. Who are you talking to?
Kent Bridget.
Oh, uh-huh.
Ow!
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. I've got a lot of things to do, yeah. We're all getting a little older every day, aren't we?
Thank goodness.
Yeah, and I'm not supposed to be.
I'm not either.
I'm not supposed to have a twenty-year-old.
No, hard to believe, gosh, I remember her when she was a little girl.
Yeah.
How is Ms. Katie?
She's doing fine, she's interning in Oklahoma City for summer. Really? Um... Don't even ask me out to...
Something down there.
Yeah, uh, just kinda like, public relations type stuff. She's a communications major.
That's a good, that's a good major for her.
Yeah.
She's a bubbly little thing, but smart.
Yeah, I think she's, I think she's coming home this evening. And so she can vote personally and warn and then...
And then go back?
Head back to work, yeah.
Yeah.
Did we post a meeting?
Not yet.
For Wednesday?
I mean, I've gotta get all the agenda items on there, know what I'm gonna need to be on.
Okay, now, would we, we don't, would we, we don't pay these classes till they go to, all right? So, August twenty-fourth, oh, wait, that's seventeen, seventeen?
Yeah.
Seventeen, we're just not paying that from seventeen?
They just got the invoice.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I, I looked at that, too, that's...
I'm sorry, what?
Expo Center phone bill, um, for the alarm system.
Oh, that's one of the ones, it's the affidavit thing.
Right, they just, um, sent me the purchasing agreement, so I didn't know what to say.
Yeah, well...
Uh-oh, uh-oh, what was, what was I doing?
I don't know, here's another one to do.
Sorry about that, Dad.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I wish, thank you. And I can only do one thing in it?
Yeah, I hear you.
Well, uh, what's your name didn't have anything to do with that, that just retired? Was she in the, no, surely not, she was just a teacher.
Yeah, I think so.
Why, why is her name escaping me now?
Ann, talk about Ann.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ann, um...
From Deer Creek. I can see her playing.
I can, too, Ann.
Used to work in the clerk's office.
Yeah, Ann. Come on, Max, help us out.
She used to work in the clerk's office, how many years?
Ann.
It was...
Henry.
Henry, that's you, Embry, Embry, Embry.
Ann Embry.
She lived at Deer Creek?
She used to.
She grew up in Deer Creek, I think.
But she retired from county training.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, I didn't even tell, I was asking Cindy if she...
No, I don't think so.
Hey, open meetings, did what's-your-name from Pawnee teach that again?
Um...
The real bubbly guy?
Yeah, 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 what's her, uh...
Gotta remember her.
That's named Groomer. Suzanne.
Suzanne, yeah.
Groomer something else, that's her second name.
Spears.
Spears, thank you, yeah.
She, she runs an H&R Block tax service.
Oh, she does?
I haven't been to any schooling in a, in a while.
It was a good class.
Get back to it.
Yeah. And it was full, there was a lot of people there.
Depending on how things go tomorrow, I'm just probably enrolling some. But they haven't even got their schedule out yet for the new, this new...
You can call Alex, okay? We have a motion to...
I make a motion to approve Mike's purchase orders and travel claims.
Hi, he owes already.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Test move, Ron seconded to, uh, approve payment of purchase orders and travel claims, all in favor?
Robert?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Test?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Um, item CC blanket purchase orders.
Move to approve.
Second.
Wrong move, test seconded to approve blankets, all in favor?
Robert?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Test?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Here's what they, which that is also the, the state's eye.
So, just a second, I have this one, move these back to... Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, this is, uh, okay, this is a phone fax quote for Grand County Health Department for replacement of guttering. And you have taken, you called Sync Services, Gonzalez Welding, and Younger Construction. Uh, no quote from Younger, no quote from Gonzalez, and one quote from Sync Services for three thousand dollars.
Okay. I guess it's my turn to approve. I make a motion to approve the bid that you received back for the three thousand dollars.
Sync Services, okay?
Yeah.
Second.
Test motion, wrong seconded to approve the phone service quote from Sync Services for three thousand dollars to replace the guttering on the CD, or, uh, the Grand County Health Department building. Um, all in favor?
Robert?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Test?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Next item, I have not gotten it back, um, from the DA, and also I, um, told him I wanted Kelly to sign it and the, and this summer Garcia to sign it before I brought it to you all, so...
No action.
No action.
DA story duty and waiting for signatures. Item F, encumbrance of payroll for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
I, I just wanted to, uh, I did talk to Buddy Carroll, and he is in agreement that we need to go ahead and get all of the June payroll in by June because it messes up the budget stuff if we don't. Um, so, my, I would like to request a special board meeting if we could to run the payroll through, and then, like, whatever resolutions that we need to have run through. Has every, we, I know Alex is working on payroll stuff, have, have any of y'all submitted yours yet, or...
Uh, we're finishing ours up today, since it rang through.
I submitted mine.
We should have it done today.
I think she's in pretty good shape on those, getting them in, and, uh, so overtime...
Are we gonna do a special payroll then, in July, if, if there's overtime?
Yes, yeah, you want to...
I was gonna say, what he said, well, what he's saying is that for June, you need to, and, and he said if we wanna get him on the phone, we can. Um, but what Buddy, I talked to him on Friday, and he said, anything in June needs to stay in June. So, if they have, you know, like, you either may say, you can't have any, you've gotta either use comp time or, or cut off their overtime, I know it's unforeseen for you all at some point, but he said it just really messes it up if we go ahead and do another special payroll, because he said that, you're already in that next fiscal year.
Well, it's a real problem from budget to the council, because they're budgeted. What we've done on ours, like, is, what we did last year, and, and it may not matter, because last year we, we did it way earlier in June, so, because we met your cutoff day.
Right, right, right.
So, what we did was we paid everybody... So what we did was we paid everybody up to the fifteenth on their overtime and then, then they don't actually get their check till June, July.
Right, they won't.
They don't get there till July tenth.
Get it all processed, but we'll hold it till the tenth of July.
Yes, exactly.
But it will be dated the thirtieth.
Right, and it was the same thing what we did then last year is then any overtime, we went ahead and had a special payroll. And they might've had a hundred dollars or something, you know, there wasn't much, and we ran it like a normal payroll, so we'd have done it like July fifth and paid at the tenth.
And so then that was on your next fiscal year.
Yeah, for, for cash accounts, it's not.
It's really not that big a deal.
Our cash accounts aren't the big, but budget is, you cannot.
Right, and that's what he said, he was like, you need to get what you can through that budgeted account, cause then you're in your next fiscal year after that.
Is that what you want us to plan on doing then, is, is just running overtime as a special?
I'm gonna do all my overtime that I know, uh, up till we turn it into today.
Right, right.
But then like if, and it raining, I really don't foresee you having overtime.
I don't either, I don't either.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, all it does is rain, it's not at all.
Yeah, you're right, we might be out putting up floods on it, but we're gonna try not to, but if we do, it shouldn't be a big deal to run a special.
They'll just run one in July and.
Do it for the July, yeah, so.
Or can they?
And some of our guys may say, you know what, just put it on July.
Yeah.
July payroll for August payment.
Yeah.
So, i- if they do that. They may say, just take that as, do it as comp time.
If you do it as comp time, it's fine.
And then at any time, if you've got the cash, you can pay your comp time up, so.
Yeah, so it'd be better if you could do it as comp time and then like Cindy says, then if you later wanna pay that comp, we could pay them out on the next paycheck.
Right, exactly.
On the next paycheck.
And that's the same.
Because honestly, it would be easier for us not to have that second payroll, cause she has to input every single day.
Okay, so the earliest we can do, uh, uh, the special payroll encumbrance would be, uh, ten thirty in two days from today, that would be Wednesday at ten thirty. What, when, when do you all want to do payroll? That means we gotta have time to get it to you though.
Right.
So is that too early? I mean.
Could be, yeah. Uh, and maybe, you wanna call Alex in here, she's.
Yeah, she would be the one, she's the one that's gonna be able to say, she's got a lot on the plate right now.
And she's like, hi, Alex.
Yeah.
Can you come in? We're talking about payroll stuff.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, bye.
I thought you were gonna say we're talking about.
Well, we are.
Well, yeah, we are. She actually does the hands-on, I'm like, ah, I don't know, I don't actually push the buttons, so I just. Although she's been training Jenna on that stuff though, and we did go ahead and order because we had it in our, enough money, I went ahead and ordered Jenna a new computer, cause she has the oldest one in the whole office. Oh, okay, so on the payroll, um, go ahead if you wanna ask.
When, when, uh, we realized you've got a lot on your plate, when do, when? We need to get it to you, so if we get it to you today, when could you have it ready? I mean, we obviously need to. We're just trying to figure out when to have a meeting, we need to give you time to prepare it.
I'll probably have it completely checked and done by, at least tomorrow by lunch.
Okay, we can't have one for forty-eight hours, so we didn't know Wednesday was too early.
Yeah, cause I've got, um, I've got the courthouse completed, I just got to put, um, District Two's in and, um, go through and check it out.
Okay, so Wednesday, we can, Wednesday wouldn't be too, too stressful, um.
Are we doing it like early Thursday morning?
Thursday morning would be better for me, gives me time to get the agenda ready and for you all to kinda look it over too, are you getting me that?
I won't be here Thursday.
I won't either.
Oh, that's right.
No worries.
I'm sorry, no.
No, so not Thursday, so.
How about late Wednesday?
Late would work for me, and I mean, I don't even care if it's during business hours, it doesn't matter to me, it can be evening, I don't care. You guys tell me what works for you.
How about four o'clock?
Yeah, that's, that's.
What day do I need to set the payday for?
You need encumber, but, but we won't go till the July tenth day, what day is it?
I, that's what they need to know because I have to set a payday. I, I can encumber it, but I, it has to do a payday.
July tenth, so normal payday.
So will that, uh, that will be okay then on the ACH stuff? Cause your effective date at the tenth?
I'm, I think so, I'm not really sure on that, that's more of a.
Cal protein.
Hmm, that's more of a, I don't know.
See, the problem is, we, if you did all the checks, you can run them and print them and hold them, but when you do the direct deposit, those people can't get theirs till the tenth, so.
July tenth is Tuesday.
But you can send an ACH file to a bank and put an effective date, and it's, it's, holds it out in a pending folder and doesn't process it till the effective date, and I know that's how Bank Sevens works.
The other thing is, is all of our insurance because I've been paying in arrears, do you make sure we?
That might be another separate deal because you'll need to encumber an act, cause aren't we paying, we used to pay ahead, now we're paying behind, how we, what, what month will we be paying?
We'll still be paying, it, it's not gonna affect that, it's still gonna be paying like we normally are.
So, so, so the June payroll will be June insurance, will that be May insurance?
June payroll, it's gonna pay for June.
June, okay, good, okay, all right, then I won't be a problem on that.
So what day are you gonna use, June or July? I am encumbering, um, you want me to encumber?
Yes, it'll be this year.
Right, it'll be encumbered on.
The, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
And what day are you gonna use on the checks?
Um, you want me to run them on the tenth?
Well, you can, you can, you can date them now, we're just gonna hold everything.
Yeah.
Okay, well, on the ACH though, um.
Are they separate files, or is it all one batch file? Or whatever happened last year, we gotta be careful of that, the date.
I, yeah, I might have to.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, cause they should be, we should be able to send the ACH file and have an effective date and it not actually post till the tenth.
Yeah, I might have to call her and ask if they can do that.
Cause, but my, my question is, is if you do that, does it print the date on the warrants as the tenth, or does it print? It's still gonna be out of fiscal year seventeen, eighteen.
Do we need to do a special deal and make everybody's paper for one time and hold them?
Which, is that gonna be easier or harder for you if we just do it all paper?
I'm able to do that.
I mean, for a one-time deal, we could just.
And that's what Buddy had suggested, is that we do paper payroll on this last payroll.
And maybe give them to them on the ninth so that they can get them to their bank on the tenth, a one-time deal, give them to them on the ninth and that give them, everybody.
They wanna go home.
Some of them might have, yeah, on, when they go home on the ninth.
With that for you? Right, and that's.
The warrants have to be dated to June and registered in June.
Yeah, so that would be my thing, I think that would be the easiest deal is just have it be all paper, paper, pay.
So everybody do pay, let's, and I'll pay them out on the ninth, any time on the ninth.
But they will be dated by.
And on the day.
And register, okay, so we'll date them as of?
The night.
The night. Well, well, we'll give them on the ninth, but they're gonna actually be dated.
Wednesday.
Right, the thirtieth or before. Yeah, yeah. That worked for you and that, yeah, cause that will keep it from having it all messed up, right?
It'll be not in a different fiscal year.
Cause that's what happened last year.
That was what happened last year.
Part of it was here and then part of it was, and then it wasn't registered till the next fiscal. Okay, gotcha, okay, sounds good. Okay, so Wednesday at four will be the meeting.
And Alex, so would you have to print paper to do the, the IRS stuff?
I do anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, just deposit it and then I take it out.
Okay, got you, okay, so everything.
Everything will be fine.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Good.
And we will let our employees know that everybody will be.
I'll send an, I'll send an email out.
So we can tell everybody that they will be seen on the ninth, to allow them to have time to get it to the bank on the tenth.
Okay. Okay, works for me. Do we need a motion on that, or?
Um, let's see, um, um, yeah, we probably do just to make sure that, yeah, on F, but.
I move to encumber, uh, the June twenty eighteen payroll, uh.
Encumber and produce?
Encumber and produce and hold paper checks, uh, pay everyone with paper checks and hold those until the ninth of July. At which point we'll be giving out to the employees.
For dispersal, okay. So, did you say second?
I second that motion.
Ron move, Hess seconded to encumber and, um, print all the payroll for fiscal June twenty eighteen. For dispersment on July ninth, but to have everyone to be encumbered for fiscal year twenty eighteen, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye. Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously, and that we will have a special payroll.
And paper checks for everybody.
Paper checks for everybody, okay. Alrighty, now, encumbering for the AT&T and with fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
I just kinda wanted to bring, you know, that has still not been resolved, um, I, I've had, uh, when I came back last Monday, there, uh, someone had called from AT&T, I've called her back, she's never called me back. I've gone up and talked to Steven about it, and then he emailed and he advised it, everybody and go ahead and encumbering, as far as I know, everyone has. And I'll double check on that just because we will have to pay that, it's just, and we want it out of seventeen, eighteen, we don't want it out of these funds, so, um, I just kinda wanted y'all to be aware that that has not been resolved, I don't know why it is taking so long to resolve, and.
AT&T.
Yeah, exactly, nowhere, nothing else has to be said, so.
Okay, if you like rail, you know, the railroads, they're, they're their own entity, so it's AT&T, all right, thank you for that information. Acknowledging the ODOT bridge management system, twenty eighteen local government selection list, this was received, um, from, uh, the ODOT. And I think this is just, I think we have to, uh, acknowledge that they've sent us a list of all of our bridges, so we just basically. Need to acknowledge it with our list, and we, can you scan this in and email us more times so that we'll have it in that, so.
Really just.
And that was discussed, we discussed a little bit about it, and I told them over at CD eighty-eight that we hadn't got our list yet.
Oh, okay.
Uh, about that, that's the first I've seen it.
Yeah, we just, we just got it last week, last Wednesday or something.
Okay, well, um, they were talking about acknowledging that, about whether we'd received a list or whatever, and I told them we hadn't received ours yet.
So you can go through there, that's the whole entire county's, um, that's still on NBI list. So, we acknowledged that.
I definitely want a copy of this.
Yes, I'll email it to you all.
Okay.
Okay, um, uh, oh, this is the bid fourteen twenty eighteen, the six-month bid tabulation that we have received, and we do have the unit concrete added to that.
Page five, uh-huh, you'll verify.
Alrighty, so.
Yeah, for some reason I got it sideways instead of.
So you're gonna make us do this?
Yeah, well, I'll flip it back around. I just, then now I was in a hurry, like, okay, I'll, I'll mess with that later. Cause I prefer to have it all in the same direction.
I don't like my neck out in the first list in my book, so, um, alrighty, so we need to accept, uh, the, uh, bid tabulation.
I make a motion to accept the bid tabulations.
Second.
Hess move, Ron seconded to accept the bid tabulations from fourteen twenty eighteen for the six-month bid tabulation, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye. Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously, resolution thirty-two, interlocal agreement with Alphaford County, uh, resolution thirty-three. Uh, Garfield County thirty-four, Tade County thirty, fifty-three, and, and Noble County, so.
I'm sorry, Cindy, I asked you about that earlier.
Oh, that's okay, you didn't see it on the agenda, well, I had it on there, but I didn't, for some reason, I don't know why I didn't have those up there, but I will, if it's okay, I'll put, is it okay on Wednesday to put some of that, or do you want me to?
Yes.
No, yeah, whatever you want, knock it out of the way.
Yeah, that'd be fine, yep, that's fine, so, uh, no action today, okay. Uh, resolution, cause you was talking about making them out of the letter size and two signs so that we didn't have those long sheets, and that's fine. Uh, so the resolution of interlocal agreement and mutual aid, are, are we ready for those?
Yes, I have all of these.
All of them there?
All of those that are on number, yeah, well, and it's actually, it's K.
It says K, it had L.
It's K dot, it, I, I looked at that, I'm like, okay, it really is K.
So, so just, just a second, do we not usually send these to the towns first to make sure they want interlocal agreements with us?
I don't think we did last.
Didn't, okay, all right.
No, I think we sent them to them because if we're gonna do work for the towns, we have to have them to sign off.
So, okay, we got Holly Fire Department here, are they on the list?
Yeah, thirty-five.
Number thirty-five, okay, I'm gonna read them off, you tell me if we've got thirty-five, okay, thirty, uh, we got, that's what I got, two, Town Jefferson.
Town Jefferson, yes, that's thirty-sixth.
I know, we got three Town Jefferson.
I have two copies, one of the standard.
You got interlocal for the Town Jefferson and mutual aid.
Oh, oh, got you, okay, got you.
I did two originals for each.
Got you, okay, got, yes, got it, two mutual aids, then we have Tattle Lamont, we have interlocals and mutual aid, got those.
Okay.
We have Wakita.
Yes.
Interlocals and mutuals, Town Manchester, interlocals and mutuals. City of Medford, interlocals and mutuals. Town Nash, interlocals and mutuals. City of Pond Creek, interlocals and mutuals.
Yes.
And Town Renfro, interlocals and mutuals, okay, got it, alrighty.
I move to approve the mutual aid and interlocal agreements with the towns of Pond Creek. Uh, it would be two thousand eighteen dash thirty-six through dash fifty-two.
I'll second that motion.
Thirty-five, we're gonna.
Oh, excuse me, thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay, so we're thirty fifty-two, okay. Ron moves, Hess seconds to approve the mutual aid agreements and the, um, interlocal agreements with Holly, Town Jefferson, Lamont, Wakita. Manchester, Medford, Nash, Pond Creek, and Renfro as presented, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye. Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Let the signing party begin, now.
Yeah, no kidding.
Sorry I'm making y'all fun double.
No, that, we need to each need a original.
Yeah, that's what I thought, we both needed a original.
Yeah, that's right, no, I think we've always, we've always signed.
We haven't even got the contract yet, either.
Do we need to sign anything to, uh, verify our stamp that we put on our checks?
Oh, the deposit, I mean, I've.
Yeah, do we have to do that each year?
I think we do that on calendar year.
Calendar year?
I think that's right.
Okay. Okay.
And what are you referring to, that?
You know, whenever our, we get a paycheck and our, our Cindy Bobbitt's name's on there.
Oh, the signature, signature stamp.
Yeah, do you have to sign anything for that each year?
I don't know, we certify.
I think Cindy said that we do that the first year.
I think so, I think we certify the signatures at the, you know, the first year. I wonder who the mayor of Renfro is now? Do you know that?
Uh, is Frank Enders still the mayor?
He passed away.
Frank passed away? I didn't know that.
I remember.
I did not.
I didn't know that either.
I guess I better need, I need to find out.
Yes, we do, we need to find out.
Well, I'd say that too loud.
Uh, I didn't.
I'll verify it, let you know if it's otherwise, and that was Renfro, Ron.
So, yeah, for what budgets and stuff, so, but it's in watch, it was the court, I mean, mainly those two that ran care of it, yeah, so, anyway. Does that meet Tricia, is for an anchor, that sounds right.
Yeah, I think so.
Finally, then, where's the, uh, did we get that back from Buddy?
No, uh, for, I got it from Buddy, but I didn't get it back from ADA.
From ADA, I'm sorry.
But I did talk to Buddy about the charges, and if, and he says that only applies to the, uh, audits, as far as the percentage of what you can charge. And he said he's charging us the same as what he's charging every other county, with the exception of, like, Garfield County charges more, cause it's bigger, but counties all of our size, he's charging them at the same rate.
How does that rate to what we paid last year?
Last year, I think it was twenty-five hundred, or was it thirty-five hundred? From what I could tell, cause I went back and looked at the, thank you, the POs from last year. And there were a couple of other things paid to him, but they were for different things.
Okay, well, we'll wait for, we need that.
Yeah, so, I'll, yeah, I'll, uh.
About N, um, are we ready for?
I have it, but it's not.
It hasn't looked like, okay, we're gonna sell it.
Yeah.
That one, okay, um, O?
Same scenario, okay.
P?
Same scenario.
Uh, Q? Okay, uh, R?
No, those are all sent up together.
Okay, and S?
Let's see, um, oh, let's see, R, let me see, make sure I have, see if I have R. That was Blue Woods County.
Yeah.
Now, I have that, and it did not, here's, here's what it is, is what Brandon had sent to me. Here's what he sent to me, and I changed it up a little bit, and put it where all of you can sign, but it did not have, here, here you guys can see that. It's the agreement for the, to work with NODA and the OEM to, uh, implement the hazardous mitigation.
We already did that, we had to have that.
I think that's just they, they have, we approved to do it.
Don't we have to do that annually?
But it's a letter to it, I don't know, I guess it's just a.
I'll send it up to Steven.
Okay, but yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't ever sign that.
We sent, you might tell him, you know, we've got that contract that we did, you know, we did.
It's a resolution.
We did a resolution, we did a resolution, maybe the letter needs to acknowledge the resolution or something.
Okay.
But send that to Steven as well, so that would be R and S.
This isn't where we have to, uh, the money has to come through for the phone tariffs to the LEPC.
No, what are you looking at? No, we're, uh, what I looked at was the NODA mitigate, when we're working on the mitigation plan, what are you looking at?
Oh, that's Oklahoma.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're looking at a different item.
Ah, I told you.
Sorry, wait a minute, this is, oh.
Oh, I've got the same one that you have.
Yeah, that's my fault. Okay, here's the.
This is the, to implement the completion of the multi-jurisdiction hazardous mitigation plan. This is that, what we signed the resolution, you know.
Okay, that's the one I thought you were calling.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Hey, Reddit.
Hey, that, let me talk about my NODA letter.
Yes.
What that is, it's called a letter of.
Of agency.
No, a letter of agency, and what it is, is just something saying that they can access our stuff from the state, or for our grant application stuff, that's all that is.
That NODA could access.
That NODA can access it, that's what it is, they have to have something on fire.
And this is, this is, if we say, we're saying we approve of them to do that, that they can do that.
And, and, so, Steven needs to, yeah, so Steven needs to approve this.
Yeah, we just need to.
Yeah, we just need to give a test form, like, so, okay, okay, alright, so.
Now, and I apologize, there is the, the same scenario too, it's not on Woods County.
So, items, um, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S are all waiting for ADA approval, so.
No action.
So, no action.
R and S too.
So is T.
Oh, with T, excuse me.
I do have the next one.
What are we doing here?
So, okay, so no action, so no action, those items N through T are waiting for ADA.
Okay, so we're gonna have the ADA sign off on this before we.
That's the Woods County one, yeah.
See, Brandon Fetters has to sign this one too.
Yeah.
We sign.
So, and, see, their ADA has already signed off, and signed off on it.
This is just the agreement between the county.
For the nine-one-one, yes, uh-huh, right.
I'll, I'll try to get these back on the agenda on Wednesday, and I'll try to just.
Only changes our dates, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that, and there's three originals, you know.
Which I made extra, I'm just one of those, I just feel like I have to try to.
You just want Steven to go ahead and approve it before we.
Right, we have to have all contracts and all that, he has to approve, so, no action. So, what about the detention service agreement, do you, of course, does he sign that one? Alright, very good, item U, we can have action, uh, that is, uh, detention service, is it juvenile detention service agreement between Grant County and Sequoia Enterprises for twenty-two fifty-two per day?
Two originals.
Do we have a motion to approve that one?
Uh, whose turn is it now?
Thank you, George.
I, I so moved.
Second.
And there's no change from last year.
Okay, Ronc moved, has second to approve the detention, juvenile detention service between Sequoia Enterprises and Grant County for twenty-two fifty-two per day, all in favor? Bobbitt, aye.
Ron.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
Does that help to put the date right on there?
That's what we always.
Yeah, that's what we always like, see.
Cindy, could you holler at Scott Starman and see if he's available?
Hi, Pat asks if you are available to attend the board meeting. Okay, thank you, okay.
Okay, annual subscription for SWF nine-one-one, mass education, public alert system, conjunction with, with county, has the ADA looked at that one? No, waiting on the ADA on that one as well, so no action. Item done yet, interlocal agreement, Canadian County Sheriff's Office and Grant County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen.
That we have, that's the one. You want me to go get it, I didn't bring it in here.
Yes, please.
Okay. Now, thought about that.
Interlocal with Canadian?
Hi, can you come in for a sec? Sure, yeah, no problem, thanks, buddy.
I'm gonna approve your six month bid tabulation.
Yes.
So, we just need to show the way that.
We can go back to the minutes, we have not authorized the minutes. While we're waiting, let's move, uh, can we have a motion to move from item, uh, uh, U? Item U to item five, and act on the minutes.
Would it be V since we did?
Uh, V, excuse me, item V, excuse me, yes, item V.
Z?
V is in Victor.
V is in Victor.
Yes.
Okay, if I'm right, I make a motion that we move from item V back up to item, uh, four, uh, no, 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 five, consider the enact on the approval on minutes.
Do you wanna approve them as while you're moving, one motion?
Yes, one motion, I want to move and approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Hess, motion, Ron, seconded to move to, from item V to item five, and to approve the minutes of June eighteen, twenty-eighteen, regular minute, all in favor? Bobbitt, aye. The Rock?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, going back down to items on the agenda, that brings us down to item W, and Cindy went to get that contract.
Now, like, have you guys made any more, uh, copies of the six month bid than just this one? Just the one that she brought in?
I don't think so, we can't.
Okay, well, I do, I mean, I usually wanna take a copy myself and one of my foremen, so.
You can make more copies.
Okay, please, I will just leave a little note on there, make some copies.
Okay, sounds good.
And I knew you probably would anyway, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have three copies, just two originals, they're, for you all to look at.
Could you maybe take a minute?
Sure. I'm all jumbled up.
Alright, item.
Thank you.
Item W, interlocal agreement, Canadian County Sheriff's Office and the Grant County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, um, it is at eighteen dollars per day. Our question is, is, uh, the Department of Corrections pays, like, twenty-five, twenty-three to twenty-seven a day, and handling tree, uh, and you certified, what, forty dollars a day at cost?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four at cost? And what does the Department of Corrections teams pay?
They pay twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay. The Oklahoma Constitution does not allow the county to supplement the, the constitution, is like, the lawsuit that, that, uh, the sheriffs had with the Department of Corrections that, uh, Brian Cannon brought forth in line, that the counties cannot supplement the Department of Corrections for inmates, so they have to charge them. I think it'd be the same thing, we can't supplement other counties, so our question is, why is we, why are you at eighteen, when it was certified to cost thirty-four in the.
Because, you gotta understand, those inmates are being assessed thirty-some dollars a day for their jail cost at Canadian County. All I'm doing is providing Canadian County extra bed space while they move them in and out and through court dates, and so, the, the cost has nothing to do with the inmates themselves, it's basically me renting bed space with Canadian County. So, Canadian County is out that money, not the inmates. And I think that may be where the confusion was before, as to why are our, our inmates being charged thirty-four dollars a day, and Canadian County inmates only being charged eighteen? Well, Canadian County inmates are being charged the thirty-some or forty dollars a day on their jail cost, whatever has been deemed by the judge in Canadian County. This is just between Canadian County and us.
But if they're being charged thirty-four dollars a day, Canadian County is making money off of you, because you're, they're only reimbursing you eighteen, but they're getting thirty-four dollars, right?
Well, Canadian County is overcrowded. This is the same contract that Canadian Counties have with five other counties besides myself in the past, well, since you've been out of office. So, would I like to charge Canadian County more? Sure. And no, Canadian County's not making money, I mean, it's costing Canadian County money.
Well, if, if Canadian Counties are receiving thirty-four dollars from the inmate.
On paper, you gotta understand, collecting that from the inmates, a whole other story.
Well, it might take them a while to collect it, but they do collect it eventually, I mean, you're probably collecting from inmates that was here twenty years ago, and a little bit every month or something.
But Canadian County's not making money. Canadian County.
Is Grant County losing money?
No, that's, that's the only way we are, um, that's the only way I take them to the doctor, that's the money I use to buy food and groceries, that's the money that I use to, um.
So, okay, so you're not losing money, eighteen dollars a day? So, how come we're char, well, then why do we certify that it costs us thirty-four dollars a day to house our inmates? I'm confused.
Well, it is confusing, it's really, it's really confusing.
The calculation in the jail cost is you take, um, all expenses for, for a calendar year. So, if I, I take the salaries of my employees, of my jailers, and I take the cost of food, and I take, um, any utilities that there are in the jail, and any expenses, plumbing expenses, and you take all of those for a calendar year, and I add those up, and then I divide that whole number by the number of jail days, which is how many people we had in jail for that calendar year.
Grant, are you talking Grant County inmates?
And that's how I calculate our jail cost that the judge certified.
Okay, so the reason you're not losing money is because the, the jailers, as a budgeted account, you're, you're getting money back in your cash accounts that actually is being, being budgeted out of our account, I mean, yeah, why you're not losing money is because we're subsidizing you, you know, we're budgeting.
Well, it's the same way in every county.
Yeah, I get that, but what I'm saying is, it's, it's a cost of, you're, you're losing money at eighteen dollars a day, because you're not recouping their salaries that we're budgeting.
That eighteen doll, that eighteen dollars doesn't even go into that number. That eighteen dollars is Canadian Counties in the pickle, and I need money, and so, that's, that's what they've, we've agreed to do to help each other. I'm doing it for eighteen dollars a day, because that's eighteen dollars a day per inmate that I don't have, and they're doing it today, and I'm agreeing to do the eighteen dollars a day, because that's all they can afford.
Well, I.
The only other alternative is, I mean, I need a hundred and fifty thousand a year from you guys to supplement the jail, that's the only way we function. This is it, and you're the only one that's ever funded, no, which is fine, and that's your, that's your, your poor bugger.
So, so, let me, let me make sure I'm getting this straight. You're saying you, you take all these expenses, and you divide them by the inmate days of people within, that have been arrested within Grant County here? Alright, so if you had, if you had a hundred more arrests within Grant County, your, your inmate expense would be less, correct? Correct. Okay.
Correct.
I think I get what he's saying. Um, as far as that goes, you can only, you, you can only do your job, uh, so much, you can't, you can't go put in more people, just because to make your expenses to go down, they have to do something toward being arrested first, so I, I, yeah, I understand that.
But, but because you're, be, if you had, how many, how many inmates from Grant County do you house? Five? I can't remember, you just told me before.
Five right now for Grant County, good God. Probably about ten.
Do you have ten Grant County inmates?
Today.
Today, and then, so how many Ca- Canadian County?
Today, probably only about six or seven that were down, right now.
Seven, and, and so, do you have any other inmates? Do you have any Department of Corrections inmates? So, you've got, you've got sixteen to seventeen people in. So you've got, you've got sixteen to seventeen people in your jail today? Sixteen to seventeen. So, is ten inmates pretty much the average for Grant County?
No, most of the time we average about twenty-five.
From Grant County?
From Grant County, probably about ten.
About ten, so, okay, so usually about ten from Grant County, and you have maybe fifteen from somebody else? So about half, less than half, yeah. So, okay, so if all you ever, if you didn't take in any inmates, and all you did was the ten from the county, and you didn't take in anybody else's, would you still need the same staff? I mean, do you, I mean.
Yes, yes, that's required by law.
The same staff, so you, it's, but you wouldn't have the paperwork, I mean, would it cut down on anything if you?
Well, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm putting this in the other, I'm putting the shoe on the other foot. If we average ten Grant County inmates, and we pay out eighteen dollars a day for three hundred and sixty-five dollars, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that's sixty-five thousand seven hundred dollars that we could just pay out and have somebody else deal with the headache of.
That's true.
Feeding our inmates.
And having the housing, yeah.
But you gotta understand, now, I still have to do all the transports, I still have to go take care of all the medical. So if Canadian County, if there's an issue medically, they have to afford anything. Canadian County makes all those trips. We don't do anything but let them sleep and feed them three meals, that's it.
Yeah, but if we.
And the way I'm making money is, it's only costing me just a little over, probably a dollar a meal on average. Maybe a little more than that. So it's costing me, say, four dollars a day per inmate to let them sleep here and eat. And they're paying the eighteen, so, I mean, that's fourteen dollars a head.
But I think what, what Pat was getting at is, maybe we need to get out of the jail business. We, we take our liability risk away. We, we don't have to have jailers and all of the inspections and all the things, and worry about all that plumbing and stuff for sixty-six thousand dollars if we average ten a day and we, we, we ship ours to someone to take care of. Maybe it'd be cheaper for us to ship our inmates out, I think is what you were saying.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my point, is.
Get out of the jail business.
If, if the eighteen dollars is, is, is a doable deal, why aren't we taking advantage of that?
Well, we're still gonna have to maintain the jail because we're gonna have to intake those inmates upon arrest and take care of them until they can go somewhere. So you're still gonna have expenses, you're still gonna have to have the working pony, you're still gonna have to have all that stuff. But without that contract, I don't know where the money's coming from to take them to the doctor, to the hospitals, to the emergency room, to buy the groceries, to that, that pays for every day of operating that jail. Because that money has to be given to Canadian County.
But it does not pay any of the wages or the benefits of any of your employees?
No.
Yeah.
Good, because that's, that's really what I'm wondering, if, if you just don't need more money in your budget, and let's just take care of our own, and.
Well, and, and we, we get to use the, the extra money up and above our cost from Canadian County to purchase other things such as equipment, uniforms, buy a lot of stuff like that for our people with that money too. That's above and beyond what covers the, the food and medical.
Can, I mean, I, I, I don't, the eighteen dollars, I just think it needs to be higher than that. I mean, I just.
Well, I'd like it to be higher than that too, because that's called one friend helping another. And there's five counties, five of us give them to Canadian County.
What other counties?
Oh, I think Potawatomi, Dewey, or two of them, I'm not sure the other two. But there's five, I think there's five of us. I just don't understand why, why the, why the question is there to not be able to bring income under the facility to operate off of, that's, I don't, I don't get that.
Well, I think it's a matter of, I mean, you've explained more, I understand more about what your cost was, but when we see costs, and they say that the judge says it's thirty-four dollars a day, and we're only getting eighteen, and then we see Canadian County gets, they charge them the assessed thirty dollars.
Thirty-four.
Thirty, thirty-four dollars, excuse me, thirty-four dollars. Well, you know, that is, uh, two is ten, sixteen dollars that they potentially make that we don't get.
And you gotta understand, a lot of that, a lot of that jail cost, we never recoup. I mean, people end up sitting it out, which ends up costing the jails more. I've got either one or two in my jail right now that are sitting for the next three or four months at twenty-five dollars a day because they can't pay their jail costs.
So what's the.
And so, their jail costs are gonna be wiped clean, but yet it's costing us to wipe it clean.
So it's costing you twenty-five dollars a day to let them sit there to wipe their, so how come that's costing you twenty-five dollars, but you can do eighteen and you're not losing money?
What do you mean it's costing me twenty-five? No, they're sitting it out at twenty-five dollars a day.
They're getting credit for twenty-five dollars a day.
And we use up, it's just an expense that we don't recoup.
Okay, I've got a question. If you have inmates on there that gets assessed as thirty-four dollars a day, where at, where does that money, if they do pay in the future, thank you? In the future, they come back?
They pay those jail costs at the, at the court clerk's office.
And that money goes where?
And that money will come back to our office eventually, if it's ever paid.
I think that's what Cindy's saying is, is we're charging them this much, and they're getting that money back. Why are we only getting eighteen dollars? But you're gonna eventually get the money back.
Eventually, you hope.
Yeah, if they pay.
Right. I mean, you gotta understand, there's people that were here in jail when you were here that we haven't recouped any money on. That's the failure pay warrants that this lawsuit's about.
Oh, yeah, I, I understand what you're doing.
Yes.
The numbers just look so terrible.
Well, you gotta get past the numbers because that's.
Well, we've gotta explain the numbers to the people that are gonna ask us.
You know, the numbers is, that's eighteen dollars a day that I'm earning that we wouldn't have available to us to purchase and operate our facility. So, you know, there comes a point in time where you take what you can get and able to operate above and beyond what you would like to get.
So you can tell us, you can say that this eighteen dollars a day that you're taking in is not hurting our population, our constituents? I mean, it's not costing Grant County.
Because you're not having to take money out of your general fund to fund, to fund the jail. It's being funded through that contract. I mean, the money that comes in on that contract is saving you guys having to supplement money from the general fund to fund the jail. That's saving the citizens in this county money.
Well, I think that's the big hangup is, is the difference in the numbers and stuff. When you actually get right down to it, what they advertise for to be cost, and what it actually cost is, about the difference.
Yeah, why, why are we charging Grant County people thirty-four? Maybe if it was eighteen dollars, maybe they'd pay it. Maybe they're, maybe they're hung up on the thirty-four dollars or whatever it is. You know, maybe if you, if you had, maybe we need to certify that it's only eighteen dollars? I don't know, but I, I have a real.
That's a, that's a set standard across the state now that, that we've come up with as a sheriff's association to figure those jail costs online.
That's good.
So that way everybody's.
That's good, the same, same, that's good.
So each jail in each county is gonna be the same, on the same page?
As far as figuring.
How, what you use, what you use.
And it's gonna flow, yeah.
And your cost is dependent upon your jail population.
Well, yeah, it's gonna flow.
Right, I, I get that.
And that's why mine went from forty to thirty-four. Because I'm trying to do my best to make that number an accurate number, not just throw a number out there.
I'm still going back to the thirty-four though, but if you average in those jail inmates in your number, so you're using an average of twenty-five inmates a day, right, to get your average? You're not using just the Grant County ten, right?
Correct, no, you have to, you have to do it based on our book and program.
Right, so you're doing it on your actual, your actual numbers of what you had in there.
Doesn't matter which county they're from?
No, as long as they're in your jail, jail days.
So those inmates are costing you thirty-four dollars because you're using them in the figure, right?
Well, they're not costing me thirty-four, that's just what the figure comes to, and that's what the law allows us to put as a jail cost number.
Well, it must be costing you.
So that's a fictitious number.
It's not a fictitious, it's a, it's a number that's based on a formula, which is based on overall cost divided by total number of jails.
Do you do that on a calendar year or a fiscal?
Calendar year.
Can you show us from last year, please?
Matter of fact, I think it's posted upstairs, and it's posted in our office, the judge signs it every year.
Does your association do this, this divided by a number of inmates for the whole state? Is that how they arrive at that?
Well, each office has to do their own, but, but that's where I got to, where I add everything in, is how other counties are doing that.
Okay, I just wondered if that was common business across this board?
Well, I think that's a good, I think your association was smart, and I think that was very good of them to figure that out. I, I do agree on that, that you're all on the same page, it's easier to explain it.
Well, I don't wanna put our, our law enforcement out of business, you know? How long, how many years has it been eighteen dollars?
Hmm, ever since I worked at the office.
So we're really actually probably need to have a little increase, you know? I don't know whether other five counties want an increase or not, or four counties.
I'm sure they do.
I'm sure they do, but. Everybody's just doing the same contract.
It's, it's once a week, you, you see on the news a Canadian County deputy sheriff busting somebody for big amounts of drugs. You would think they could afford it in the morning, eighteen dollars a day.
Well, they can't use that money to fund their jail though, I mean, though that's specifically earmarked money. seizure money is, it's specific statutes that cover that. It has to be used for like drug prevention or drug enforcement.
Or drug dogs, and probably pay maybe a person maybe that's in drug related.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, whenever you got a major I forty or I thirty-five coming through, that's.
Yes.
That's a big help on that part.
But would I like to have more, absolutely, but that's, that's keeping us afloat, right there.
Well, I think I understand a little bit more about where he's coming from on how that works now. I still don't agree with it all, but the setting of the price at eighteen dollars. That being said, I would make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Grant County and Canadian County.
Second.
Yes, move on second to approve the interlocal agreement between Canadian County Sheriff's Office and the Grant County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year eighteen nineteen for eighteen dollars per day per inmate. All in favor?
Bobbit now. Rawl?
Yes.
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 Motion carries to one. Thanks Scott. Uh, the salary revision is per state bill eleven thirty regarding the revision of the Oklahoma State election board salaries effective May first twenty nineteen. Let us know if that is taken.
Yeah, yeah, I'll look it all over and everything, so.
And I know in twenty twenty-three, the lawsuit, Rob, we know what the salary's gonna be increased to in twenty twenty-three.
I don't know if they have that figure yet, do you know? Oh, they do, okay.
And I sent it, but I didn't, I didn't commit this memory, so now I don't.
I got the one on the twenty nineteen, but I didn't ever get the one that said. Yeah, so, yeah. Okay, you can email it to Cindy and tell her that'd be good, thank you.
All right, um, uh, item Y, affidavit for District One, yellow, that probably ADA.
Y, Z, and AA, the next three.
Y, Z, and AA are still with our ADA, yeah, for review, so no action. Item B, the road crossings, do we have any road crossings? None, no business per Title twenty-five.
Do you have any business, Max, do you have any business?
Uh, did you guys see the deal that was sent to us by Randy Robinson about the road miles?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not open it, I saw it. I'm not open it, I didn't see it.
I had to make a copy of it for, but I thought we might put one in the, in the.
Oh, file back here?
File back here.
Oh, that'd be good.
Because it, it does talk about the road miles per district. I haven't figured out Grant County.
Oh, it went down. I think ours went down.
Did ours go down?
Mine's gone down.
Because I thought we always, they, they show seventeen.
Page you are?
Uh, page five or six.
Oh, okay, I got you. Seventeen sixty-seven point eighty-four?
Okay, there is a way to figure that, it gives an example of outside the county here on the first, but if you follow them back through the pages, it gets back here to, to Grant County.
Oh, on the splits.
On the split.
Yeah, got it.
Uh, and I assume that that's a difference in the miles, the way that that splits.
Well, D three looks like they need a few more miles, they've got about a hundred less miles than we do, Max.
Yeah, what's the deal?
I just got all the people.
I wonder if they notice bridges?
Yeah, I think they've got more bridges than anyone, so, yeah.
So you agree, okay, one, two, three, six oh nine? Well, we're really close, Cindy.
Six oh nine eight six, six oh nine seven nine, and five ten.
How, how often do they do this?
We will read, when we read it, when we go through the census.
Well, yeah, but, I mean.
No, no, you mean the, the road miles? We don't, we don't do the split until the census, but we, we certify our miles every year. And that's, they just send the, they send us a deal, and then you fill it out when you add miles or if you take miles.
Any of us have closed anything since, since I've been around?
Well, and then they drive some of the roads, and if they find a road closed, they'll take it off the inventory. So when, if they've taken it off, and then they've not come back, and when you've opened it, like, a lot of bridges are closed, maybe you've closed it at the, the mile line, and, you know, so they'll, they'll take it off. And then you put it back on, you put it back in, and then you gotta let them know that you've opened it. Like, that last time, someone moved in, the treasurer asked them, so we had to open that bridge, and we opened that mile up, and I had to, we did a deal, and we had to get it back on our inventory.
Okay, I didn't realize that people from their road back.
Yeah, not every, not every mile and not every year, but they do, I think they random do them.
See, I think I looked at the counties in, in Texas, in Beaver County, and one other one in Natchez.
We, we were fifth, are we higher than fifth now?
We're, we're fourth or fifth now.
We used to be fifth highest. Most bridges, fifth number highest.
Garfield County is more than that.
And is, is that mileage of caliber certified miles?
Caddo.
That includes city streets.
Beaver.
If they're in a five thousand population.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Caddo. Garfield.
Stinks out of the road or a mile, doesn't it?
Texas.
Okay, I think Grant County is fifth still.
Washtenaw.
Yeah, we're still fifth.
There's Texas.
Wait, we might be sixth, no, no, we're still fifth. Yeah, we're still fifth.
Yeah, Texas, Beaver, Caddo, Garfield, and Grant.
All right.
And we got.
Washtenaw.
And Washtenaw?
Washtenaw, let's see, so there's Beaver, Caddo, Garfield, Tadaway, Washtenaw. Two, four, five, six. So we're, yeah, we're, no, we're sixth. No, excuse me, you're right, Washtenaw's not, excuse me, you're right, Max, no.
Okay.
Yeah, no, so we're still fifth, that's right.
Yeah, we're fifth.
And our funding is sixty-third out of seventy-seven.
Sixty-third?
Because of that population?
Yeah, population.
Wow, so that tells you, and what was. Wow, so that tells you, and what was surprising about me is, is how much it had decreased in the last, uh, several years. Uh, where did I read that?
When I was gonna say, when I took office, I was thinking we were like an eighteen oh one or something on miles. Of course.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and the, the couple of years before I took office, I know that, uh, John Futhy took off a lot of bridges that are not on my NBI because of the being closed or temporary pipes.
Okay. Well, it's kind of disheartening when you look at that and you look at the funding that's been.
But with that, I, I, and I get that up from the other side too. Yeah, we may be sixty-third out of seventy-seven, but look how few paved miles we have compared to those above us and that's expensive.
Okay, Max, is it supposed to keep or?
Yes, you can keep that, I had her make a couple copies.
Good, all right, that's great, you'll put one in that file back there.
Yes, that would be great. Uh, that's, that's all the new business I have.
I have loads.
I have none, okay, Commissioner comments, Max, you're up.
Okay, Commissioners comment, District One. We got some nice rain over the weekend from, from Friday till this morning. We have anywhere from three to five inches in my area, depends on where you're at. We spent some time out yesterday pulling out some electrical trucks. Uh, I guess Sand Ridge, uh, west of Wakita going north up to Gibbon Elevator lost like fifteen or seventeen light poles there. Uh, I don't know where they're at on the recovery of that right now, but, uh, O G and E was out, AEC was out. Uh, I know Manchester's water wells were out, I guess Medford had a water break and, uh, people were out of water up here for a while.
All day.
All day.
Yeah.
It was like happy birthday to me.
Well, that's not good enough.
Thank goodness I have, I said, I'm Eleanor Junior, I had two liter bottles of Pepsi things out in the thing full of water.
Well, Scott had called me and kept me informed about the update on the water there and stuff, so belated happy birthday, Cindy.
Thank you.
Um, I'll be going to Oklahoma City Thursday. Uh, our state meeting got, uh, changed, the statewide, uh.
CED.
CED board meeting, and I will not make the NODA meeting at Enid Thursday.
I'll bet they'll cancel that, Max, because all the Commissioners will be there.
Well, I don't know whether they will or not, I guess it depends on how many.
Yeah, to get a quorum.
Quorum.
Uh, I talked to. Mark Bold, I'll bet they're all at that meeting too.
Yeah, well, Mark's on the board for Garfield County, but I don't know whether he's gonna go there.
Oh, got you.
Down to city.
Yeah, I got you.
But, uh, there'll be several others. Uh, that's about all I have.
Okay, Patrick?
We got a lot of rain as well, I think in Palm Creek got almost three and a half inches. Um, I was able to send some guys out this morning, we were taking some trees out of right away up by Holly up in the sand, they were, they were working on that last week, so I think they were able to continue to do that. We're gonna get both track hoes moved, uh, moved home hopefully tomorrow and we're gonna, uh, the Fair Board got, uh, City of Palm Creek to bring them a, a, uh, roll-off, so we're gonna take the, the roof off that concession stand building and put it in there and then we're gonna take the rock and use that for riprap and along with the, the two building floors. We're gonna bust all that up and take it out. So hopefully, that, that'll be a good thing for us to do while it's too muddy to be doing much on the roads for a couple days. Um, that's, that's about all I've got. Everybody be patient, it's gonna take a while for things to dry up enough to, to work. We've got, we've got a short week this week, you know, be maybe Wednesday or Thursday before we can do something.
Yeah.
Then next week we've got Fourth of July, so please be patient.
Uh, we had rain, we, uh, Salt Fork was the big winter, we had about six inches of rain, so.
Wow.
Big, big, uh, we had, we've got water across a lot of roads, uh, so again, use, we're asking our people to be sure they're using caution, let us know of washouts, obviously we can't drive every road, uh, but we're, water's still across roads, don't, don't drive in it and drown because you don't know what's washed out underneath it, so use safety on that. Um, so we're working on that. Um, did you get the email from Brandon on the, uh, this, from Dale Freck? Uh, we need to make sure we've got our guards all on our mowers, that's a big deal that, that, uh, OSHA's, you know, writing this up on. I know when they came here, they looked at ours and one of ours had broke off, so we've got it replaced, so we just need to make sure we, it's hard to keep those guards on, I mean, the, the Johnson grass just tears them off, it's not that we take them off. Those, those shields, they, they get tore off, it's not that we take them off.
Barely hanging on my grasshopper right now.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, you know.
Same difference, yeah.
Yeah, it just does. Um, we've got one of our tra, our new trailers that we purchased on, off the bid deal, uh, we've had a lot of problems with the, the slope sheets all cracking and the wells are all breaking. Um, they can't, they've got them, they're gonna replace all of that, they've got, they're doing them one at a time, they came and got one last week, they're working on it. But we also got problems with the sides of them. We got someone to come in and measure the thickness of the steel and they come out as a ten gauge, or they come out as fifteen gauge rather than ten gauge that we bid. So, um.
That is good to know, thank you.
So that is some information I'm going to try to take up to Stephen when he's maybe not so busy to ask him where we need to be on those, Max.
Okay, well, I, I think that's great to know because you, uh, back when we had our conference down at Norman, I had my truck driver bring our trailer down to Oklahoma City and they welded it up where I was having cracks and splitting. Uh, they informed us that there was cracks you did up underneath. Our trailer isn't doing that that bad, but it's dented terrible. There are several places on that trailer that the workmanship is very poor.
See, they're, they're trying to go back and say that they're, they wanted all the serial numbers and all the numbers off of everything because they're trying to go back through the factory and see if they had a crew that they were training, they're trying to say it was
Faulty.
Uh, faulty, some, something that, that, that's not their, their.
Normal.
Normal trailer that they're trying to track it back to something in the production of those trailers, which ours would all be made at the same time, Max. Well, not necessarily because mine was springs.
That's true.
They were airbags, so they would not have came off the production line back to back necessarily. So I'm, I'm not so sure on that, but we're investigating that and moving forward on that. Um, yeah, uh, Joe Gasper.
Sunbelt.
Sunbelt, I wanted to say Sun Valley, I knew that wasn't right. Sunbelt had called me about some heavy duty pipe, eleven and three quarters inch, I didn't know if you all were interested in any of that. You don't need any pipe, okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, don't know if I need a whole, all of it, but I didn't know.
Are you gonna buy part of it?
Well, I thought about that, Max, if you, if you wanted to maybe split a load on that.
If you wanna split a load, I'd be more than happy to do that.
That would be good, maybe we oughta split a load, it, it's, uh, it's, it's really cheap and he's got it in and so, um, Cindy will probably need to get with you, after the first of the year, after the first of the year. Not, not now, yeah, not now, but after the first of the year because it's way cheaper than what's on our bid list, it's, it's a, it's a special doodle.
Yeah, and it's heavier wall, it's, it's point five three five.
Yeah, right.
So it's over half inch wall.
It's, uh, and cheaper.
And cheaper, and if you've got cross-town beams that you're gonna use where you have to use the twelve inch material, it's sufficient, yeah.
It'll carry it.
It'll carry it.
That's right, okay, so, all right, um, and, yeah, the, all the state meetings have got changed because of the election tomorrow, they changed our meetings till Thursday. Uh, so the, the, all of them are there, I'm not sure I'm gonna make them, but I've got, I've already had prior and day, uh, prior things on that Thursday, so we'll see how that goes. Is that, brings us down to item number ten.
Oh my gosh, that's adjourned.
Max's favorite.
I'd make a motion to adjourn, second.
Has moved wrong second to, to adjourn at.
Eleven nineteen.
Eleven nineteen, on favor?
I, wrong.
Right.
Yes.
Aye, 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 aye.
Oh, aye, 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 aye. So we have a special meeting Thursday, it's Wednesday.
Wednesday, four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
And I will get the.